Ready? Yep. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order if you're staying, please. Councilman Hucks will have our invocation, lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please let us pray. I come to you in prayer tonight to honor you as the source of our mission, request that you lead us to keep the affairs of this city proper perspective with you as a top priority, knowing that when we do, everything will fall into place according to your will. And please lead us to be servant leaders and follow your example. By thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, David. All righty, let's try to deal with our audience of visitors. Anyone here that would like to address council on any issue? We'd be delighted to hear from you at this time. I don't see any, so we'll move on to the approval of our minutes. Special session July 24, 2023.
Mayor, I move we approve the minutes as a special session dated 24 July 2023.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Bud. Concerns, comments, any questions regarding the minutes? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thanks, Kim. All right, item eight, we're going to bypass. Let's go into new business, first item. An ordinance making additional preparation for fiscal year 2024 in the Capital Projects Fund for Amory's Wharf.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Tanya will start the presentation. I think Laura is going to assist.
Couldn't be made possible without her expertise in bringing this all together. So I appreciate all the work she's done and the point getting us here. Laura was able to meet with the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation Shoreline Erosion Advisory Service. Say that three times quick and let me know how that goes. To kind of talk about Amory's Wharf. We were brought to our attention that there was some erosion concern happening there, and we just wanted to verify what things we could do to correct the erosion. So for some of our newer council members, you might not be aware that land was donated to us. And so in 2013, we received all the proper signatures in order to take ownership of that property. So we have the old, old, back-in-the-day picture of how many acres and so forth that it's out there that we acquired. Current conditions, we've all been down there, seen it. We've seen cars drive down there. We have a little area to sit, but the current conditions of what you expect. Waves hit it, erosion tends to happen, the current takes it away, but it's still doing what it's supposed to by protecting ultimately the sea line that is there. Now, what Laura has been able to do with Talking with Seas, which is the abbreviation of Shoreline Erosion Advisory Services, is come up with a plan to correct the erosion. And they look at different levels to determine what plan it needs to be. Amory's Wharf fit into what is called a living shoreline category, which basically means this will be the only time that allows us to recapture our land that has been taken by the seas. So as you go down there in low tide, you can see the shelving that's occurring. We're going to be able to put riprap out to the shelving, so you kind of see that green line? Put in some sand and some natives of Spartinis that'll grow and take root. It'll be a true focal point for Pecosin as natives, people go down there, take a look at it, you'll be able to actually kind of sit on the sand. You'll be able to do various things. One of the good things that they'll be able to do is bring children down there. Make it a living classroom, potentially. All these came up with the idea of Laura working together with Seas and a native Pecosin marine contractor. So we're super excited to bring it forth to council tonight. So the boat ramp, we have props. How often do you come to a city council meeting and have props? So we actually have a sample tonight for y'all to touch. It is what we anticipate putting on the boat ramp. It's called a floating boat ramp. It's actually eco-friendly. It's better than a concrete, and it's actually cheaper, and it'll last longer. You know, as finance people, we want to make sure it lasts forever, and we don't want to spend any additional dollars. Both sides of the ramp, we plan on installing the riprap, clean sand, and of course, the native, native plants. Do y'all have any questions?
Any questions so far? Okay.
Now, here's the important part. We are going to attempt, through the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation, to apply for a matching grant. It is a 50-50 grant. That process opens up in November, and it goes through February. Total cost currently is $150,000 to do everything we just spoke about, putting in the riprap, the sand, the plants, and then the boat ramp. I'm asking tonight in an ordinance for y'all to appropriate $100,000. That's for two things. As you know, things get expensive by the time projects go around, and if there's any funding left over, we are able to do additional amenities down there at the wharf that y'all may recommend for us. So what I'm asking tonight is an ordinance appropriating $100,000. We're going to use bond interest that our director of finance says I have available to hopefully get this completed. Now, you may ask, if we get the grant, when will we do this? The marine contractor recommends only doing it in fall. Because why? Summertime is when everything starts to grow in the water and people are out there having fun. We don't want to disrupt that. At the end of the day, this is what a living shoreline is. We actually had one put in close to it in Messick. Cove Road or Ike Martin's property down there in Messick has a living shoreline. And then there's a few other examples of what the living shoreline is going to look like for Pecosin. Do you have any questions as of, or Laura?
Any questions at all? Go ahead, Key.
Now, we talked about when I went down there this week with you that the concrete that's down there is bad, contaminated or whatever. Is that, that will be removed as part of this?
So the debris removal will be removed. So it'll be, sorry, I'm not used to being microphoned. I'm used to walking around. So the debris will be removed, and it will be completely regraded, and then the sand will be brought in. So by the time it's done, it'll be completely cleaned up, and the area will be completely aesthetically pleasing, as well as fully functional from a living shoreline perspective.
That's just the area, like we had talked about, from the bulkhead that, whatever that industry is there?
Yeah, it's, if I go back, let me go back. So it's that front portion of Amory's Wharf, and the reason being is because that's where most of the fetch happens. If you look around the rear portion or the side portion of Amory's Wharf, it's considered healthy from an ecosystem standpoint. So in layman's terms, if it's not broke, we're not going to fix it. It's very healthy from a flora and fauna standpoint, so we're not going to touch it. The main portion of the erosion is from the front portion, and that's where the waves hit it. Now, I will say that the erosion, from a true erosion standpoint, is very minor, but we're going to take this opportunity to not only create a focal point, but to prevent any future erosion from occurring on this property, because this is one of, you know, Pecosin's, you know, focal points in our city. And so I have larger plans for this property as well, so this is just phase one.
Any questions, Laura? Okay. Tanya, anything else?
No. Again, just tonight for your consideration, we do have an ordinance presented to you asking you to appropriate $100,000 to Capital Project Fund utilizing debt interest as the revenue source. And again, we will apply for the grant, and if we are awarded, we will plan on starting that project in the fall of 2024. If by chance we are not successful at it, we will be coming back, hopefully asking for the additional consideration so we can make this project happen.
Great. Tanya, thank you. Laura, thank you. Great presentation, by the way. This is one of those times when we actually get to spend money that will benefit the people in Pecosin. It really will. I think everybody on this, on this councils had some kind of activity at Amory's Wharf over time. And David, by the way, kudos to you for staying on top of this. You know, go down there, find the erosion, look at the erosion, and then here we are tonight, you know, getting ready to approve this, this, this project. Can you go to the picture with the, with the, what was left of the old dock and pier? And I think David told me for the, I don't know if people on TV can see it or not, but that boat right there, did you tell me that that was Roy Davis's boat?
Yes, sir. That boat was built by Mr. Roy Davis and his father when Mr. Davis was a young man just getting started as a commercial waterman.
And, and Mr. Davis is also the one that had the clam business there as, as well. And I don't know where the barge was at this point in time, and Bud may remember, Debbie may remember, now Debbie's way young. But there was a barge down there at some point in time, and, and we went down there, I don't know what year it was, and actually skated. Yeah, there it is. Actually skated all around that, that barge. It was amazing. And it's just going to make it a lot better. I think great idea.
Well, Mayor, I should point out the pictures that I retrieved were taken from the Facebook Bull Island, Virginia history website, so I give credit to them for posting those for us to be able to utilize them.
Okay. All right. I bet we, I bet we finished something, let's have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2024 in the Capital Projects Fund for Amory's Wharf Living Shoreline.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made, and second that we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments, questions? If not?
Just a comment. I think this is a great place, a city owned, all that property, there's no residents joining it, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to do this.
Will be good. All right, Ms. Kim?
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thanks, Kim. Let's move on to item two, resolution making appointment to the Colonial Behavioral Health Board. Someone have a, a name?
Yes, sir, Gordon.
Go ahead.
I move that the council pass a resolution making appointment to the Colonial Behavioral Health Board with the name of Dr. John Shaner inserted with the term that will expire June 30th, 2024.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made, and second that we adopt the resolution with Dr. Shaner's name inserted. Ms. Kim?
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunton?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All righty, that's good. Item three is a resolution making appointment to the school board. Should someone have that?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution making appointment to the school board due to the resignation in the Western Precinct with the name of Kristen Jones for the term expiring June 30th, 2025.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made, and second that we adopt the resolution with Kristen Jones' name inserted. By the way, let me just recognize you, and thank you, thank you so much for, for kind of putting your life on the line. It's, it's a...
Yeah, that speech comes after you.
You, there's a bunch of support here for you, and, and I'm just, you know, I'm tickled to death that you're more on school board. I think you're going to work well with the rest of the board, and I know you're concerned about our children. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay, did, I lost track of thought, did we have a motion?
We have a motion.
In a second. Okay, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunton?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All righty, we have a closed session. Mr. Vice Mayor, will you take us there, please?
I propose we go to closed session pursuant to session 2 dash 2, or 2.2 dash 3711 Alpha 3 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended to discuss acquisition of real property for public purpose.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion made, and second that we go to closed session. Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Bunton? Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, Kim. All right, thank you, Kim. Good. All right, we are reconvened from our closed session, and we need to certify that, please.
Mr. Mayor, certify that we only talked about the things that the law allowed us to talk about.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion made. Second, we certify the closed session. Ms. Kim, please.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hux.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thanks, Kim. Mr. Manager, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just two things, both related. I just wanted to thank everyone that was involved with our Spark in the Park event, which was relocated or rescheduled from June to the latter part of July. And also everyone involved, including attendees, of course, to the National Night Out. Both events were great. The first one was really hot, and despite that, we had a really nice crowd. And then we had another event less than a week later, and it was a little bit cooler, a little bit different event, but I think both of them were a tremendous success. And just want to thank everybody who helped make that possible.
All right. Thanks, sir. Bud?
Just like to thank the people at home and those who came out here tonight for paying attention to the city government. Get all your friends to do the same thing. And we still have opportunity for people to volunteer for the various boards and commissions. And I strongly recommend that you consider doing that.
All right, Bud, thanks. Angie?
All right, I'll be, I'll be brief. But I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity to go visit the Amory's Wharf with Tanya. And while we were there, we met a kayaker, a professional photographer, has a huge Instagram following. And he was telling us about what a gem. He doesn't live in Pecosin, but he comes to Pecosin multiple times a week because what a gem that area is with the wildlife and the birds and the jets. And just how beautiful, he sends his followers there and says, "Hey, go to the point and have lunch after you're done." It was just really fortuitous that we met him and a great experience. Thank you, Tanya.
All right, and Tanya has some pictures that I saw about the F-22 and what that thing was doing. Wow. Okay. David?
Thank you, Gordon. Also, I wanted to comment on Amory's Wharf. And just to put things in perspective, my role in this project was nothing more than sharing an observation with staff. I had nothing more to do with it than that. And the credit goes to Randy and Tanya and Laura News, who was their environmental compliance officer. And I'm amazed at the speed that the staff has gotten us from a simple observation to the vote we made tonight in just a matter of a few short months. So thank you very much to Randy, Tanya, and Laura for your efforts, along with all the other staff that has contributed to that. I would also like to share a little bit of research that I did just Googling a search for history of Amory's Wharf. And I have sent an email to Gordon, Randy, and Tanya with the first three hits that came up. One was a Daily Press article from 1994 that I vaguely remember when the city had attempted to have Amory's Wharf designated as a historic landmark. I also found a newspaper article from the York Chronicle, which also involved the Pecosin Post that details the history of Amory's Wharf, the Amory family, and the fact that Amory's Wharf did at one time have an official United States post office, an address, as Ernest, Virginia. And that was named after one of Mr. Amory's sons. We can be successful in having Amory's Wharf designated as a historic landmark, it may well open the opportunity for us to pursue other pots of money that exists for historic preservation. So hopefully, we can see that through to fruition this time, the opportunities that that holds. So thank you, Kim.
All right, Dave, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I would like to congratulate Dr. John Shaner to his appointment to the Colonial Behavioral Health Board and to Kristen Jones's appointment to the school board. Thanks to both of them for stepping up and volunteering their time and being served to the citizens and the students of our city. Also, new teachers came back to, well, came to work on August the 10th, on Thursday. So I wanted to welcome all of our new teachers to the city. And all of the other teachers and staff will be coming on August 17th. So summer has been flying by, and before you know it, you'll see the buses on the street again with an early start to school this year before Labor Day. So I wanted to welcome them. That's all I have.
Okay, Debbie, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, two things. First is, although it's not the last Tuesday, it's the fourth Tuesday of the month will be the Mobile Food Pantry, starting at 8:30 for those who would like to volunteer. Distribution begins 10 o'clock or shortly before, depending on how quickly it takes to get set up. Host this month will be MS Baptist Church, or MS Baptist Church. And let, point out to them that MS also gives out cleaning supplies every month down there. So they're going to be doing double duty this month. And the second thing is, I'm not sure the Amory's Wharf, I know that years ago it was part of that, at least was, was given to the city under the name of Thomas Jefferson Rollins Nature Area down there now. So everybody knows it as Amory's Wharf, but thanks to the Rollins family, about 103 acres or whatever it is, is now city property. So good for them.
All right, good deal. Anything else? All right, get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Motion made. Second, we adjourn. Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Fie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilwoman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, and we adjourn. Thank you.